Legislative matters of January 14, 2019. I am City Councilman Bill Dwight, and I'll be presiding. And Laura, would you do me the honor of calling the roll?
Sure. Councilwoman Dwight.
Here.
Councilwoman Klein. Councilwoman Carney. Present. And Councilwoman Murphy.
Here.
Okay, we have a quorum. Councilwoman Klein will be late. She gave us a notification. She should be here in a little bit. Open the floor up to public comment with the caveat that these proceedings are theoretically being recorded on video and audio. Anyone in the public? Actually, for the record, so the camera knows anyway, there is no public here. So first, I'll accept a motion for the approval in the minutes from previous meeting of November 13th, 2018, and...
Actually, two sets.
We get two? Oh, two sets. Yeah, that's right. I'm sorry. That was the day of the joint committee hearing. So the Joint Community Resources Legislative Matters Meeting, and then also the one for the last set.
And I will second as a group.
Okay. Any discussion on the approval in the minutes?
They were very nice.
They were very nice. Please note that. All those in favor who are accepting the minutes of the two minutes of January 13, 2018, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed and objections? Okay. Now, let's see. This public hearing was scheduled for five, Laura?
Yes.
Is that right? Okay. Sorry. I'll accept a motion to open the public hearing on proposed zoning change of, per Mass General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5.
I will move to open the public hearing.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of opening the public meeting, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. So this is in relation to a proposed zoning ordinance amendment to modify the definition of accessory structures. We, well, all right, we'll go through the format. We will hear from proponents, and actually, so far, I only see a proponent. And Carolyn, would you like to step up and address the proposed change?
Sure. So the proposed change is to add one word to the definition of accessory structure in the zoning ordinance to specify that among other items that are not allowed as part of an accessory structure besides sleeping or kitchen facilities is specifically the word bathing, so that it's clear for people who are building accessory structures that are not accessory dwelling units that bathing would not be allowed in those facilities as well. The request came from the Building Commissioner because he wanted text support for his interpretations when he's meeting with applicants who are trying to build workshops or garage spaces to make sure that everyone understands very clearly that these are allowed as workspaces as opposed to living spaces. And the reason for that is that your detached accessory structures can be a lot closer to property boundaries than accessory dwelling units. And also, accessory dwelling units require additional review from the planning board or zoning board depending on the situation. So, and then the only other thing I would add is that the planning board reviewed this last week at its public hearing, and they unanimously voted a positive recommendation for the full city council to adopt the language change with no edits.
Was there any public comment on this in the panel? Questions? Since I don't have a hard copy, could you just read the... Oh, there it is.
So the toilet is not allowed?
No, the toilet is allowed. So wash, so sinks and toilets are allowed. The idea is you can't put a shower in.
No shower.
Or a bathtub. And, you know, the Building Commissioner has never had a problem saying, this is, you know, I guess the issue is where does the line get crossed between whether it's a dwelling unit or just a workshop space, particularly in the situations where they are closer to the property boundary than are normally allowed.
Councilmember. So workshop space, but they can't be, it cannot be a commercial workshop in a residential district, correct?
Well, this doesn't, you, that depends. That's a whole different question about whether you are allowed a home occupation permission. This is generically what an accessory structure is. So depending on the district, you might be able to have...
Do a home occupation.
Yeah, home business, or if it's a commercial district, then you have an accessory structure.
Okay. If that's the case, I know this can be a pain in the butt, but I'm sorry, but for some shop purposes, actually, there's emergency shower systems for contamination possibilities. There's also eye wash stations and things like that. That commercial, any private shops may have those systems. And they come as showers eventually. And I don't know, I mean, I suppose they could appeal for variance, I suppose, given the circumstances. A welder, for instance, may want something that, or somebody using a solvent or something. But that also requires other permitting, because if you're with permitting, with welding, you need to permit to, for, to have acetylene or any other potential explosive shop.
Yeah. So I would say that the Building Commissioner still has the ability to interpret the code and how it's applied. So if someone's work is with, I don't know, photo development or something, you know, the old school with a lot of chemicals.
Right.
You know, I think someone could make the argument, this is an eye washing station. It's not anything...
But if they had a bathtub, if somebody tipped you off and go, wait a minute, it's a bathtub.
Yeah, if they're fired, they're not going to put themselves out of this.
Right. You don't need a bathtub to wash your eyes.
Right. Okay.
You could have, like, you could have a sauna, but you couldn't have the shower.
Are you okay?
I mean, it's like a hot tub, I guess, you know?
And a hot tub, water would not be bathing. That's what I'm wondering.
Bathing is a toilet. Bathing is bathing. I think that's pretty clear.
Well, as I said, when Carolyn came in, a bidet, of course, then crosses the line, doesn't it?
I don't think that's bathing unless you're, you know...
I'd take four of my colleagues.
What about a facility for washing your dog, which is bathing your dog?
I think that goes in the house. Or outside, you know?
No, we're talking about accessory structures here.
Right.
And, you know, there is some limit to what you can do in an accessory structure. And if, you know, volatile chemicals is an area we can't go into because you can't have bathing facilities, well, they're going to have to find something other than an accessory structure to put their volatile chemicals in.
And then, to be clear, we're talking about accessory structures, not accessory dwelling units. These are not units to promote habitation.
Right. So we have a different definition for accessory dwelling. So the issue is when someone says they want to do an accessory structure and their garage happens to be two feet or four feet from the property line, and all they're doing is a workshop space, and then, oh, I'm just going to put in this bathtub. I'm just going to put in this wet bar, but then, you know, you plug in a stove and a microwave, and all of a sudden, it's a dwelling unit.
All right, yeah, although it would be a little more complicated because they would probably, putting in a microwave and a cookstop top would probably come after the CO is granted, and they probably wouldn't do it for the inspection, I would guess.
No, but then you could, then obviously, then if something happens, someone comes in and says, hey, this is a dwelling unit, and the person says, no, it's not, it's just a microwave, I work here, and I get hungry, and I need a hot pot or something, you know? So, again, it becomes interpretive, but this is just another piece to help with that distinction.
Councilwoman Klein.
So I'm sorry that I was late, and you may have already addressed this, but 40% of the gross floor area of the principal structure, so if we're talking about a home that's something like 2,000 square feet, we could be talking about something that's almost 100, 100, 1,000 square feet. Do you have any sense of nearby cities and towns and how that compares to what they're allowing for accessory structures?
I think standard is...
It just seems like a lot to me.
Well, I think accessory, and it's not just for structures, but accessory uses are typically, have typically been in that 40% range, I think. And I don't know, Alan, if you have other experience about that, but that's, that's been a longstanding, certainly in our code, 40% has been the threshold for a long time for accessory uses as well.
And to be clear, if that's existing, we're talking about the amended language merely bathing, so, yeah.
And I was mired in the, this actually was an accessory dwelling battle up in Greenfield a while back, and it's difficult, it's difficult, particularly for the accessory dwelling units. That's a whole nother, whole nother topic.
I mean, we do...
Particularly in the inner, you know, the more densely populated neighborhoods where accessory dwelling units end up in garages two feet from a property line.
Right.
It's a real problem.
So we're only looking at the addition of bathing?
That's it. That's it. To the existing code.
Okay.
Louis requested it because he needed clarification when he was permitting, when he was going to be ready permitting. And if somebody built a shower facility or even a bathtub and things like that, then suddenly, it sure looks like it's a predicate for a dwelling unit.
Thank you. I apologize that I came late.
So in the context, I haven't heard any, the opponents have been pretty quiet on this, and so we've left it up to the council to discuss this within the hearing, but as such, I will...
I wouldn't move we close the hearing.
Thank you. Just a second.
Second.
All those in favor of closing the public hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
I would move we forward this with a positive recommendation.
Okay. Well, that just happened, coincidentally, it happened to be the next item on the agenda, so that's really, that's good. So that the, Councilmember Murphy has proposed that we move forward with a positive recommendation by 18.204.
Second.
Any further discussion on that? All those in favor of a positive recommendation, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
And I just want to add, I'm not going to be at the meeting on Thursday. I didn't think this was incredibly complicated.
We could run a lot.
Was that?
We could run a lot. We gave you a taste of what we could do with it.
Well, now it's in your hands to direct that with the full council.
You had choice.
I may have a spy in my place in the form of Wayne.
Okay.
He's going to be at the council anyway on Thursday, so if somebody did come up, but I just wanted to let you know that.
Okay.
I figured you guys would be okay.
Thanks, thanks for that, too. Okay, so now we're on the fifth item on the agenda, right?
Yeah.
This, I made 18.22. This is an ordinance, oh goodness, relative to taxis and livery vehicles higher. This was referred by us, the council, to LM at the last council meeting, and this is, you'll see the principal changes are relative to whether the business is based in Northampton or not. In subsection A, it's no person, corporation, or other entity, and strike based in Northampton and shall operate a taxi cab or livery business within the city of Northampton without a permit as provided herein. The new language is taxi cab and livery businesses located and permitted in other communities shall be required to obtain a permit in accordance with this chapter. I mean, the existing language states permits may be granted only to suitable persons, corporations, and other entities who are legally registered owners of said taxi cabs or livery vehicles and provided at all places of business and strike for servicing an ad instead located in Northampton or reestablished as a legal street address and strike within the city, and then just leave it as conforming to all applicable city ordinances and state laws. An additional change is further down, and that's in subsection B, operation and marking of livery vehicles, which now reads, which reads, "Livery vehicles shall be hired on a prearranged basis only with a minimum," and we struck the cardinal numerical 12 and replaced it with, by spelling out 12-hour notice, and then adding to that, "Provided that fares picked up pursuant to a preexisting contract shall not be deemed to comply within the 12-hour requirement unless the specific fare was arranged at least 12 hours in advance." And that's the, and those are all the proposed amendments that are recommended to us from the Transportation Department Commission. And we have, we have the solicitor here, and we also have the chair of TPC, who can speak to these two items.
It's okay if I sit here?
You may sit, yes.
All right, so these two items started with, so we revised the taxi language, I guess, what was it, a year ago, six months ago?
Well, if you're talking about when we started?
No, well, anyway, we brought some stuff through a while ago. And when that happened, then one of the businesses, the taxi businesses, who doesn't have a, they're...
Business address here.
Yeah, they're not located actually in Northampton. They're just across the line over in East Hampton. And they looked at this, and they said, well, you're going to cut us out, we can't do our taxi business here. Well, there was two things going on. There was one, yeah, you're probably right, that, that the way this is written, you need to move across the line like 100 yards and you'll be in Northampton. But the other is that you can't be using your livery vehicles to do, to act as a taxi here in Northampton. Am I getting this right?
Is it the other way around? Can't be using a taxi to act as a livery?
No, the problem was that, was that livery vehicles...
More regional licenses.
Because livery, ensuring a livery vehicle is less than a taxi.
Right.
And that the fleet for this particular business is split 50/50, and that at times a livery vehicle might be used to do a taxi pickup. And they also, they have a, they have some contracts, in particular with Cooley Dickinson Hospital, that it's an ongoing contract, but the actual, sometimes the bribes are not determined until the day of. So that they would fall, so if you're calling to pick up Mrs. Smith right now, that's a taxi pickup, but if you called yesterday and scheduled it, that could be a livery pickup. So the idea with the, with the second part was to clarify, if you're picking up somebody under 12 hours, it needs to be a taxi. If it's over, it's fine, it's a livery vehicle. And the other thing was to, and I think the bigger thing here had to do with defining the types of businesses here in Northampton, you know, that we want taxi businesses that meet our regular, we want the taxis and the drivers to meet our requirements to do business here. And whether they're in East Hampton or Northampton, and as long as they've done all of the permitting, it doesn't really matter whether they're right across the line or they're here. And also that they're at a legal address, because that was another thing we were running into with another taxi company, was that there were some zoning issues around the way they were operating. So that's what these two things clean up and...
Take it away, Alan.
Do I understand that in 316-17, that, for instance, a taxi that picks someone up at the bus station in Springfield cannot, a Springfield taxi picking up somebody at the Springfield bus station cannot transport somebody to Northampton if they're not permitted here? Because I don't think you can do that.
No, I don't think that's, it has to do with pickups.
In Northampton. It's Northampton pickups.
This is about Northampton pickups, right?
Right. So if you're...
Didn't you help us write this?
Yeah, I just want to make sure that, I just want to make sure we're on...
Excluding, but, but my understanding was that all pickups that were going to occur in Northampton had to be by an authorized and permitted vehicle. Drop-offs are drop-offs. They're, you know, someone from Springfield or someone from Manhattan. If they're, if someone wants to take a cab from Manhattan to here, that they don't need to, at the border, need to get a permit in order to drive and drop someone off here.
So should we mention pickups in here?
Well, just because it says, I just want to make, be clear about taxi cab and livery businesses located and permitted in other communities shall be required to obtain a permit in accordance with this chapter.
To do what?
To pick up in Northampton.
I think, I think that's a reasonable addition for, certainly for clarity's sake.
Yes.
I mean, because it starts with...
Right, because otherwise, they might not be able to drop someone off in Northampton.
That's right.
It says, "No person, corporation, or other entity shall operate a taxi cab or livery business within the city of Northampton without a permit as provided herein." So I think we definitely have to make the, we have to make the distinction that it is, or we would, I would recommend that the distinction be made, that is for pickup only. Any pickup, picking up anyone in a Northampton location requires a permitted, a vehicle that accommodates or abides by the permitting structures. But for drop-off, I agree with the solicitor, and it's impractical to suggest that any other agency coming in to drop someone off in Northampton would be...
Probably some sort of restraint.
Yeah, that's what I think, yeah.
So let's change that.
So the first sentence is a problem, too, not just the second one, because it says "shall operate."
Well, you see, that's the thing. You're operating a taxi cab or livery business. That's not picking up or dropping off. That's locating a business and operating a business here in Northampton.
Business, right.
Okay, so...
So this is just the second sentence, is what you're saying?
Yes.
So are you guys just suggesting adding the language "to pick up fares in Northampton"
after the word "in accordance with this chapter"?
Yes.
Yep.
That's what I was hearing.
Yes.
So we're required to "to pick up fares in Northampton."
In order to pick up fares in Northampton.
Yeah.
So do we need to do this as a proposed amendment?
Yeah.
My proposed amendment language, as Laura just...
And Alan, would it make sense to be even further explicit by saying these restrictions will not apply to companies dropping off lines?
I think it's pretty clear in order to pick up fares in Northampton is north pickup fares in Northampton.
I've made that amendment.
So is there a second amendment?
Exactly.
Any discussion further on this amendment? It's a clarification amendment. All those in favor of the amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. And then the 12-hour, and the other issue is the 12-hour notification, making the dubious distinctions, as far as I'm concerned, between livery and taxi cab, which is really always bizarre. And it has less to do with what actually occurs as to how someone wants to pay. The biggest knock was, and I remember this going back to Chief Sinkowitz, was that cab companies were taking advantage of just registering all their vehicles as livery vehicles and then functioning essentially as de facto cabs. And the distinction in the law is so vague as to allow for cheaper, it's cheaper to do a livery vehicle, and I think the restrictions are less as well. The, I'm not sure about the child safety seat and inspection issues and metering particularly. So I have no problem with this. I know, I mean, you know, this whole problem, the taxi license issue, that has been complicated by the fact that the Commonwealth, among others, said, "Have..." And "have," this is an amorphous system, also given the fact that their biggest competitors right now start to be looming up are essentially unregistered systems like Uber and Lyft and so forth. And we don't want to, I mean, we're trying to be conscientious and not make it so difficult that taxi cabs couldn't function as a viable enterprise in the city of Northampton and just give over to the... So it's tricky. We're threading a needle, but, so this distinction's helpful, but it seems that it's one we specifically designed to accommodate one particular business with one particular contract, and that's with Cooley Dickinson Hospital. That makes me feel a little uncomfortable.
Well, it, that was the...
Inspiration.
Yes. That, we didn't get all of the details of that one particular contract, or, but we were told that there was other, maybe kind of arrangements with other entities like that, but that was the one, the point, too, because you're dealing with patients and things like that. And also, UMass was mentioned, that they do a lot of service between the health services over there, you know, kids getting intoxicated, overly intoxicated. The ride to Cooley Dick or back home is, well, the one back home is often provided by...
And what did Cooley Dick is usually probably provided by the ambulance.
Right, so the back home is...
Okay.
And I agree with you, we don't want to make things overly difficult for these people to operate, because they really provide a service to a lot of people. They don't have vehicles, a lot of people who are on, in public housing, this is how they get to the grocery store or to their appointments. Some people qualify for the PETA paratransit that doesn't go everywhere. This will actually pick you up at a given time and drop you off at a, you know, and get you to your appointment on time. So there's a lot of value to what they're doing, so we want them to keep going.
I agree with you. The only thing that makes me feel uncomfortable is when you start making law specific to one particular agency. That makes me...
Well, and by rewarding it, we were making it so more than one taxi company could operate in Northam... That was the other thing. So we had created a monopoly, so by having our, because they are, there was one that's located here in Northampton, and the other wasn't.
Okay. Alan, you, are you comfortable, I mean, you understand my concern?
Oh, I understand your concern. I would imagine that there are others that we're not aware of. I would imagine the VA might have standing contracts, you know, nursing homes, other, other places where there's a congregation of people who don't necessarily have their own transportation.
So point in fact, actually, to Councilman Nash's point, rather than actually create a law that is right now, not intentionally, but created essentially a situation of one business operation that benefits one business in town, we've now expanded opportunity for other businesses, and it's more of an umbrella and less agency-specific.
That's right. Well, you know, there are examples historically of regulations that were put into place where there's only one regulated entity. And one of them that I remember is when the Health Commissioner of Cambridge outlawed anthrax research in Cambridge. There was only one anthrax researcher in the city, and the SJC said, well, it's not an adjudication, it's a regulation, because there could be more. And when they come in, they're going to be subject to the same rule. So I'm not as troubled by it as you are. I understand the concern when it's, when it looks like you're doing something for one particular constituent in the city.
That's spot zoning. That's spot zoning, right?
Well...
I mean, that was my concern, because insofar as this is a zoning law, well, not a zoning law, so this is, but it's equivalent to be...
But you passed this, and it gives the opportunity, and, you know, should the VA see this, they could say, oh, well, we can...
Start our own agency.
We can start this for ourselves. And so it opens up the door for others to do the same thing that Cooley Dickinson's doing. So I don't have the problem with it that you do.
No, I don't have a problem, just, I want clarity, so I want to be sure.
May I make a suggestion for a minor wording change?
Yeah.
You can feel free to ignore. I find it a little difficult to understand, because it's almost like a double negative, provided that fares picked up per...
provided that fares picked up pursuant to a pre-existing contract shall not be deemed. I was just going to suggest, end the first sentence after the word notice. Take out the words "provided that" and just say, "Fares picked up pursuant to a pre-existing contract shall be deemed to comply with the 12-hour requirement if the specific fare was arranged at least 12 hours in advance." It's just restating in the positive instead of-
I take your point. I think that is much clearer. I think that, that it transmits the same message and I, I agree, it's not-
I just found it difficult. I had to read it a couple times. That could be just me.
Anyone else, any other comments on Laura's proposal?
We could keep the "provided that" and then turn it into a-
That's true, too. That's what-
Because "provided that" is a-
Right, right.
Is something that we see in statutes and in ordinances all the time. And it's just alerting the reader that we're going into an exception now in the general rule we just stated. And if you just separate the sentence, it doesn't say as clearly, "We are now stating an exception to the general rule."
So you're just changing "shall not" and "unless" to "shall if," is the only change?
Yeah, okay, so yeah, the proposed language change now will be, "Shall we strike not be and change to if," right?
Yes.
Shall, no, just, just-
And then "unless," right?
Shall be deemed to comply if-
Just the "not not be." Not, not be, just "not."
Yeah. Shall not. I, I'm trying to see what you, can you just read that?
Okay, so a pre-existing contract shall be deemed to comply with the 12-hour requirement.
Shall.
Strike unless.
If.
If.
If, if, I see.
The specific fare was arranged at least 12 hours in advance.
Yeah.
Does that sound all right?
Good work.
Yes.
Good work. Can you catch Laura? All right, all those in favor? Oh, actually, all-
I'll move that out as a wording by Laura.
Okay, and for a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Me opposed? Okay. All right, so we cleared up the language and we've cleared up the intent. Any further discussion on the body? Uh, um, do we have a motion on this already? No, we don't.
A motion to amend.
Yeah, a motion to amend, so we passed the motion to amend, so is there a motion as amended?
I would move the ordinance as amended.
With a positive recommendation, the second?
With a full council.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of advancing to this, so the council with a positive recommendation is amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
On the rule?
We are cooking. Now, now this is where we're wading into some dark controversies here, but this is item 18.223. This is an ordinance relative to parking on Pleasant Street. It was referred to the council by, I mean, referred to us by the council. This is an ordinance relevant to parking on Pleasant Street and it's essentially establishing a handicap space in the first base southeastally of Kingsley Avenue off Pleasant Street.
I would move approval, so we can talk about it.
Okay, for, for the purposes of discussion, there's a motion to put it on the floor. And there's a second? All those in favor of putting it on the floor, please say aye.
Aye.
Council Nash, you have, you have some thoughts about this?
Yeah, so, it's the Chair of the TPC. This was sent forward with a positive recommendation. It was presented to us at our last meeting. It, it was placed on the agenda at, at the deadline and I didn't have time as the Ward Three Counselor to reach out to constituents prior to it being at the TPC. But it came forward from the, the city parking traffic engineer and, uh, that, in discussion, that there was a formula that, that was used to locate the parking spot at this particular location. I, I voiced concern about it at the meeting noting that, so this is a space, Millennium Liquors, which is on Pleasant Street. It's just south of Roberto's, past Kingsley. There's, on that stretch, there's two legal parking spaces. There's one in front of that Millennium and then there's the next strange building with the strange setback where there's only one space as well. So we have this stretch of, of Pleasant Street that's probably, you know, let's say 100 feet long and due to a fire hydrant, a street setback, and a number of things, only has two parking spaces. And so this is a business that has, you know, it's, it's a package store, gets a lot of walking business, but this is the, one of two spaces in front of the building that would be turned into a handicap parking space and that the, the owner, when I spoke to him about it, was, was concerned about it. Yeah, there we go. And that, so the history as to how this came about, so anyway, it got, it got a positive recommendation from TPC. I voted positively for it based on the information that I had at that time. So what's nice about forwarding it like that is now, so that I'm putting aside my TPC Chair hat and I'm not putting on my Ward Three hat and, and representing the, the two, two businesses here, both Roberto's and Millennium Liquors, who I've since had a chance to speak to. And that there's a history as to how this came about, that recently Roberto's underwent some renovations. Prior to the renovations, there was a hand, they provided a handicap parking space on their property in front of the building. When they did the renovations, they decided, that they were trying to create more seating and in the end, they decided, "We're not going to do a handicap, handicapped parking space here. We were just going to turn it into seating of, of, you know, the entire area." That triggered this need to find a handicap space in the area. And DPW came forward, they landed on this parking space in front of Millennium Liquors. I've asked, I'm in the process of trying to find out if there's a way that this can be reworked, because both business owners are fine with a handicap space being located just north of the, the crosswalk there. Because that would be, it would be great for Roberto's because they got a handicap space there and it would not take away the, the space directly in front of Millennium Liquors. And here, I can pull, I left it up on Google Maps right here.
Well, yeah, what's this guy right here?
Yeah.
Where, so where they come-
Yeah, it's up on the screen here. Okay, so what's up on the screen? Here's the, the space in front of Roberto's. This, the, the, the parking engineer, drive, and, the transit, what is she?
The engineer.
The engineer, said that there was an issue with the, people using a wheelchair to be able to get up this, the incline here. I, you know, I measured that with my iPhone and it's a 1% incline. And that, I believe ramps can go up to, can go up much more than that. Right here, this is where the space is in front of Millennium Liquors and you can see the other space directly in front of here. It looks like a-
It's a hydrant.
It's really the only space in front of Millennium.
It's the only space in front of it. Then there's a hydrant with the next spot. And then there's this, there's a space after that and it looks like a mail truck is parked in front of illegally up there. So both businesses would prefer that the space be back over here. And, and so I'm in the process of reworking this with, you know, going back through the DPW to see if, you know, if this space can be considered or if the space actually across the street could be considered. Over here, there's a line of, I, I believe this curb cut's been closed, but there's a line of, there's probably going to be about eight to 10 parking spaces here once all of the construction is done on the lumberyard project and having a handicap space there may make sense. One of the issues is that there needs to be a handicap space on either side of the street and there's one on the easterly side and it's up by the DEA's office. And so, well, maybe there's a way where that one gets switched sides. I don't know, but I just think that in, in my view, that, you know, having this one space used for this purpose in front of this business is, I, I don't think-
Would it be appropriate to refer it back to you? I mean, to TPC? For, to, for reworking, is that, is that, I mean, or do we have to send, we don't have to send it back to the council to send it back?
Right. I mean-
I mean, because I, I mean, there's stuff, if, if it's the only spot there and if both business, and if both businesses are amenable to the one in front of Roberto's, because Roberto's lost the one anyway, like Roberto's is looking to replace the one that it took away.
Right.
But it shouldn't shift that to Millennium.
Right.
Because Millennium has nothing, has no part, it has only that one spot. So if they're both in agreement to that, that makes sense. I mean, especially since this all came out of a request from Roberto's in the first place. It wasn't that this kind of really came out of anything more than an inquiry in their part, right?
Right.
Yeah. So if you can go back and say, "Look, if Roberto's is fine with it and Millennium's fine with that," I, you know, that's my thought, if that can be worked, I, I don't know who obje-, who would object? Is there an anticipated objection to that spot in front of Roberto's?
Not that I'm aware of. Roberto's supports it and so does Millennium.
Right, so this, you're saying this HP spot here in front of, on the side on Roberto's right now, is that no longer functioning? I mean, oddly enough, if you go by these maps, it's on their property? It looks like that's a city sidewalk, they put that.
They've always had something on their property. I thought it was a homemade song.
They had a, well, there's an HP mark right there. There's, they've got this basically designated as an HP spot. Right? See right there?
Yeah. Yeah, that's the spot that's gone.
It's gone now?
Right.
They moved that out? Okay.
Right.
Isn't this part of the city right away on the street?
That's a good question.
I mean, this is, it'd be arguably a bump out, but this is the standard sidewalk width.
Yeah, they used to park me in here.
Yeah.
Right.
Eliminate that turner patio area, so they've since eliminated that. I mean, I noted, they're still showing breaking on these maps, so it's not breaking anymore and the signs went down for a while. But this, this picture actually is relatively current if it allows me to pivot, because you'll see the lumberyard project is actually fairly far along.
Well, you got a better picture than me.
Yeah. Yeah, that's how I roll.
Yeah, you're good.
And so it just puzzles me if there is an existing HP spot, and this looks fairly recent. But this is there-
Yeah, I'm not sure this is legal parking there. You know, so these are all questions to look into.
They used to be the-
I mean, can't, can't, can't the maker of the motion, which is TPC, are you wearing your TPC hat?
You go with draw.
Withdraw or ask that we table or postpone until more investigation can be done? Or do you want us to actually move it? You don't want us to move it to the council?
Move it, kill it, council.
Kill it? Yeah, that seems kind of a waste of time.
Or we can refer it back, because we have a motion we got to deal with. Yeah.
Yeah, which hat do I want to wear? So I think I-
Well, I don't think that they're conflicting hats necessarily. I think that, you know, that, you know, it-
Well, the TPC did approve it though.
Yeah, TPC already-
Yeah, but the TPC approved it not knowing that there were these other-
Good point.
Right. It sounds like, yeah.
And, and, and you did not hear resident or citizen objections in TPC when the recommendation came forward?
And it didn't come from them either.
We are now in possession of new information that would actually make this untenable.
Right. So I actually want to make the request as the Ward Three City Counselor to my colleagues here on this committee, that you send it back to the TPC and to, for reworking and to, for a little more exploration around it.
Well, currently the motion, well, wait a second. Okay, currently the motion is literally for purposes of discussion, that's why we put it on the floor. So now the new, the new motion is to refer this back to TPC for further review.
Yes.
Is that correct? And there's a, there's a first and a second.
Yes.
See, I'm not familiar enough with the council rules. Do committees actually have-
Yeah, can you do that?
Well, this committee does.
See, I thought what you-
Legislative matters.
It's following with a negative recommendation.
This committee does.
It does?
Yes.
Well, Alan-
In the same way that this committee can make amendments that, you know, others-
Alan's quickly checking.
Yeah, I, I've got them here.
Because the, the one thing that our rules also particularly are set up is not to specifically kill any legislation by burying it in committee. And then a clock is ticking because there's actually been, the clock starts ticking once it's been introduced, so.
Yeah, but in this case, you have a request from the committee to take it back to do a reworking. I mean, it seems like-
Well, he's not requesting as the committee, he's requesting as a counselor of the ward.
We did exactly this with the Grove Avenue question.
That's right.
But we did something different. We sent it with a negative recommendation and the council-
We killed the council, yeah.
And that effectively did-
The council essentially returned it to TPC.
I mean, it would take, it would take a lot longer to do that than just referring it back.
For some reason, your rules are not loading, I'm having-
Oh dear.
Damn rules.
Welcome to our internet problem here in the house.
Well, actually today's, today's Monday. I mean, it's on, I mean, we, the other thing is we refer to the council on Monday and know that we can send it back on, on, on Thursday.
Yeah, why would we do that? Because of the-
It's only a few days.
Did you say refer back to TPC or send it to council with a-
I said refer it back to TPC, but if that seems inappropriate, because, well, Alan can't find the rules, he's not sure that we can do that.
I mean, I'm open mind.
I mean, I, I know we've done it from this committee before. We've, legislative matters has sent things back to, to committee many times.
Have the power to amend, I see that. Due to report.
Due to report, probably, yeah.
Oh, is it? Oh, the report shall need transmitting of positive data.
All right.
Negative mutual or mutual recommendation and associated votes, as well as any suggested textual amendments and related documents.
All right. Maybe we were never allowed.
Work for years.
I thought we were, yeah.
So we can't, you can't send it back to TPC?
I haven't, all those times you did, we were wrong.
Oh, well.
Well, since it, because-
We got to just found again the rules.
When you introduce an ordinance, of course, the clock starts ticking, so-
That's right.
Is to send it back to the council, kill it, and then start the clock again, do-
Send it back to the council, have them send it.
But if the council, if the same clock is ticking, if the council sends it back to committee.
So it says, "For matters referred to the Committee on Legislative Matters exclusively, the Committee on Legislative Matters shall report to the full city council within 60 days." So it's got to go back to the council.
Okay. So we'll go to the council, council can refer it back to TPC. More voted down is another possibility. And in which case, then it can be re-introduced. But the whole thing is about starting to reset clocks.
So we-
So the motion, the appropriate motion will be-
I'll withdraw the motion, please.
Will be with a negative.
And, and, yeah, substitute it with a-
Yeah, that we-
Send with a negative recommendation.
Or just send it with a recommendation to get returned.
Or for a recommendation to get returned.
For further consideration.
Right. Well, it's, it would be a negative recommendation with, with the codicil that goes on it and says basically that's where-
Yeah, that's where you go back.
So, because we either, it's yea, nay, or neutral.
That's true.
So, okay.
If we go back to TPC, the clock starts over again.
So Alan, I will say that you have made the motion for a negative recommendation. Is that correct?
Yes.
And there was a second. Do you want, you want to be the author of that or do you want, you want to?
I'm fine with that.
Okay. Council Murphy, I just put the words in his mouth as made it, suggested a negative recommendation for the parole and Council Carney has seconded and discussed-
And that includes a recommendation that a-
With the, with the recommendation, of course, we will be there to, to explain this. If we're not, there's no call, so.
Jim's got to deal with it.
Yeah, that's right. Any, any-
It's something catastrophic in the next meeting.
You never know.
You don't know. Meteors.
Meteors.
So any discussion on the negative recommendation beyond the one we just had? All those in favor of sending this forward with a negative recommendation with the explanation that we would prefer, we would recommend that it go back to committee for some work? Or defeat, actually, personally, I would recommend on the council forward, just defeat